We'll call a regular meeting in the New Ulm City Council for July 17, 2018, 4:30 PM. The order, first item on the agenda is your consent agenda items, what you wishes.
I'll offer a motion to approve those.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda items. Any discussion on any? See none. On favor, say aye.
Aye.
All's nope, motion carries. We're gonna jump to item number five, communications here. We're gonna have an oral presentation conducted by Shane Zart, there's Coalition of Greater Minnesota Cities, reporting on the recent Minnesota legislative session. I'm sure it's all good news, so go for it.
Well, some business.
I know I butchered your last name, so you can correct me on it.
Shane Zart is the...
It is, okay.
So, yep. And, yes, Shane Zart, I work with the firm Flaherty and Hood. We're located in St. Paul and represent the Coalition of Greater Minnesota Cities at the legislature. And the name is also familiar. I also work at the Highway 14 Partnership at the legislature. So, folks around here seem to know my name from that as well. But, so, this is for a longtime member like the city of New Ulm. This is review, but the CGMC is a membership organization of cities across the state. Right now, it's 97 member cities. We represent those cities primarily in the issues of LGA and property taxes, economic development, annexation, transportation, and environmental regulation, a smattering of other things. So, to kind of begin our 2018 legislative recap, it was a short session, but with a big to-do list. So, the short session is the even-numbered year. The odd-numbered year, the biennium, is the budget session where the state has to set its budget. And that's one runs all the way from January to May. This year, they didn't start till February 20th. But, you know, in response to the federal government passing a large tax reform bill in December of 2017, the number-one item on this year's state legislative agenda was, well, we have to make a number of changes to the tax code to conform to those federal changes. You know, interactions between the state and federal tax code that could be problematic to some folks. So, they came in with that as a priority. There was also a need for a significant bonding bill. They did a bonding bill in 2017, but, you know, most folks considered that one to make up for them not doing a bonding bill in 2016, despite their best efforts. And, you know, there was, the state did have a surplus, a budget surplus coming into this session. So, you know, there was debate over whether there would be a supplemental budget bill, to what level, and kind of what it would be made up of in terms of spending priorities. And then, they, many folks hoped they would, and they did finally address a pension bill for the state. But, you know, as they came in, you know, there were plenty of obstacles to this 2018 short session running smoothly. There was bad blood between Governor Dayton and the legislature as a result of some of the back-and-forth in the 2017 legislative session. You know, at the end of a session, vetoed funding for the legislature. There were a couple of lawsuits between the legislative-executive branch. And just a 34-33 razor-thin majority in favor of the Republican caucus. And the state senate made things interesting and made, you know, the passage of large bills, particularly, you know, bonding bills where you need bipartisan support there or supermajority support, you know, requiring compromise and making for a lot of back-and-forth. And then, we also had the lieutenant governor just before session being elevated to the senate seat, then vacated by Al Franken, Tina Smith. The lieutenant governor was appointed to take up that seat. So, the president of the senate, Michelle Fishbach, who's a Republican, was elevated to lieutenant governor. So, now you have DFL governor, GOP lieutenant governor, and she held her senate seat at the same time. So, plenty of interest and intrigue. And then, as always, in an election year, things get interesting. And as everyone's posturing to run to keep their jobs the following November at the legislature. So, you know, the CGMC's strategy and goals coming into this session were many, especially for a short session. But, you know, a bonding bill focused on wastewater and water infrastructure. You know, to continue to do the work we've been doing more and more of in recent years, which is, especially on that water infrastructure piece, continue to educate legislators and state officials on the high cost of some of the regulatory compliance with new water regulations at the city level. Continue to advocate for LGA, which is every-year concern, relevant to the Highway 14 discussion. We're monitoring the corridors of commerce program. We came into this session not knowing how those awards would come out. I think folks around here are familiar now with how that all played out. But, and then, at the city street funding level, to continue to advocate there for additional funding. And in response to, you know, concerns we've heard from more and more of our member cities in recent years, start to address both childcare availability and affordability in our greater Minnesota communities. So, to focus on a couple of those issue areas quickly here. You know, the water and wastewater infrastructure, you know, in part thanks to the advocacy of CGMC in our member cities. You know, the legislature in particular has started to hear the message about, you know, the high costs that water and wastewater infrastructure are imposing on our cities across the state. And in 2017, and the bonding bill that year approved a record number, the largest amount that they've ever approved before for the public facilities authority and grant programs and programs to match federal grants and help cities pay for that infrastructure. For 2018, we came into this session with a goal of an additional 167 million for those PFA grant and loan programs. Chief authors were Representative Erdahl, Senator Dames was the chief author of that bill for the CGMC in the senate side. And this amount, 167, was also the governor's proposal for these same programs. And in addition, the CGMC also advanced an idea for a new program, which is a supplemental grant program that would, with the goal of helping to pay for the high costs of that infrastructure where those PFA programs were not adequate, as we're finding more and more in greater Minnesota communities. And the reason for that, you know, those current grant programs are capped at a total percentage of the project often, which means sometimes cities are left trying to figure out how to pay the high costs of those programs where the state funding is inadequate, or even where they have some state funding. So, this supplemental grant program would have paid, you know, at least half of the project costs or buy down the project costs so that rates wouldn't exceed more than two times the metro average, whichever was the greater of those. And our chief authors there were Representative Erdahl and Senator Westrom over in the senate. You know, this, particularly on these water/wastewater issues, you know, it's been kind of all, advancing on all fronts. So, you know, both the lobbying at the legislature, our press efforts. We've had members coming down to the Capitol testifying. And really, it's been the case 2017, but certainly this year. You know, CGMC has kind of become the go-to organization for new ideas and for advocacy on water/wastewater infrastructure. And at the end of this session, we had, you know, I said we had a record amount of funding for those programs in 2017. In 2018, in the final bonding bill, we ended up exceeding it. So, setting a new record, two years in a row. So, the funding included some new appropriation bonds using the Environmental Natural Resources Trust Fund. That's those lottery proceeds that go into that. This was controversial with some, in the environmental advocacy community, who want to see that, you know, money used for other purposes, or say there's other funding sources available for this. But, that's how the legislature chose to do that in a new way this year. And, you know, despite significant interest from the legislature, the PFA and some in the governor's office and Governor Dayton had concerns about that new supplemental grant program that we had proposed. That ended up falling out of the bill and not being passed toward the end of session there. Oh, and some, the, some additional notes on the environmental regulatory program, and most of these coming in the bonding bill. One of our successes this year is that due to our advocacy and working with the legislature, the MPCA, the Minnesota Pollution Control Agency, now, as it develops compliance schedules for, you know, new regulations, new permits, it must consider the impact to debt service, debt loads, when developing those compliance schedules. So, kind of more and more trying to balance those regulations, considering the costs they impose. You know, developing a permit holder's bill of rights and regulatory certainty bill that was signed into law to, you know, to work with the MPCA to impact the timing of when they can come in and impose new regulations or new requirements on your permit after they've done just so before. And just in the interest of time, you know, a sheet here and a handout that the council has, and there's some in the back there with a little more about the environmental programs. I think we could talk more and more all night here. But, I'd also want to, especially because I'm in New Ulm here, move on to transportation real quick. Because I know a lot of folks, and Mayor Boyzeman, although he couldn't be here tonight, was, has been closely involved in corridors of commerce and Highway 14 in particular. And so, transportation generally, you know, coming into the 2018 session, we weren't quite sure. You know, there might be a supplemental budget, but there's still a question of how much transportation funding it might include. And then, the senate, the answer was no new funding for roads. You know, there was new money in the senate's bill for the MinLAR system, the license-registration system that I'm sure some have read about, or if you've bought a new car recently, maybe you're still waiting on the title registration because there's been some problems there. The House did have significant funding for roads in their initial transportation bill, authored by Representative Torkelson, the chair of the Transportation Committee and your local representative here. And because of that funding, you know, the CGMC largely was in support, between the two approaches of the House bill. There was additional funding for the corridors of commerce program in there. And for small-city streets, for cities under a population of 5,000, there was ongoing new funding for city streets, for those places. Now, there was also a proposal to dedicate, take the state sales tax revenue attributable to the sales tax on auto parts and dedicate that to roads and bridges through the Highway User Distribution Fund. You know, it would have taken, by the latest and greatest calculations, about $300 million a year out of the state's general fund and put it towards roads and bridges. You know, working with our members and kind of mulling this over, you know, the CGMC has always recognized that funding for roads is an issue. But, you know, as we had more and more discussions about this, especially for cities for whom LGA is their, sometimes their number-one concern at the legislature. It was just too big of a hit to the general fund, I think, for the CGMC to ultimately support it. And, you know, it would have not, not have raised any new revenues. It would have taken existing revenues that were going into the general fund, moved them over to transportation purposes permanently, and put that on the ballot in 2018 for voters to vote on. But, you know, we've seen in the past that when there are big holes in the general fund, when we face large deficits, it's, you know, LGA, education, those are some of the first targets that comes. That was the number-one concern there. It did pass in the House, but ended up stalling in the Senate Tax Committee for some of those same concerns. So, corridors of commerce, and the story here was, if first you don't succeed, you know, try again. So, the legislature in 2017 passed a huge amount in bonding and cash for corridors of commerce, $400 million. And, but they also imposed some new requirements on MinDOT, Department of Transportation, and how they can award those projects, some more rigid requirements, scoring criteria. You know, the CGMC Highway 14 partnership, Mayor Boyzeman individually, I know, and maybe some of you commented to MinDOT on how those criteria should be implemented. And we were hoping that even with those new criteria, although we didn't know exactly how it would pan out, that a significant portion of that money would get out to greater Minnesota projects, those two-to-four-lane, you know, safety and expansion projects like Highway 14. But, as, you know, remember the dark day of May 1st, we were disappointed. So, I know you can't see all the details, but I have the map up here.
We remember the details.
Yeah, you remember the details well. This is 2013 to 2015 corridors of commerce funding. You can see, you can't see maybe every project, but you can see it's spread all throughout the state. They did a good job balancing it out. On May 1st, with that $400 million we were hoping would come our way, this was the map here. And, you know, if you're squinting to see those greater Minnesota projects, it's because we have to zoom in a little bit. And they are technically in what was defined as greater Minnesota by the program, but right outside of the metro area. So, there was huge outcry about this, a lot of fingers being pointed. But, you know, as we looked at it, it just didn't pass the smell test, and a lot of legislators agreed with us. You know, none of those projects were more than 40 miles, I think it was, from US Bank Stadium right in downtown Minneapolis. So, you know, we, the CGMC reacted, you know, this was May 1st, late in session. It was kind of been kind of a quiet session in terms of transportation until this point, because we were waiting to see how a lot of this would shake out. When they made this announcement on May 1st, kind of set in motion a sprint ending to the May 20th, which was the last day they could, they could act on bills this session. So, you know, we called for them to make it right. You know, one of the things, we looked at that House bill that had some corridors funding in it. We said, "Make it right, send all that to greater Minnesota projects." Well, there was a whole, I guess we could do, again, a whole hour or a whole evening on how all that played out at the end there. And we did so at our Highway 14 partnership meeting in Owatonna recently. But, now, I think, you know, the result was an additional $400 million in corridors of commerce bonding allocated this session, about 160 of that to the Highway 14 segment between Owatonna Dodge Center. And also did some two-to-four-lane expansion projects on Highway 23. So, at the end of the day, the map looks a little better for the 2018 session here. You can see the two new green lines, Owatonna Dodge Center and the Highway 23 projects. And, but, you know, as, I'll leave it on that slide. But, as we move forward here, you know, we're actively working with MinDOT right now. They have to issue a report soon to the legislature this fall, in November actually, on proposed changes to the corridors of commerce program. We have a lot of ideas that would, would make it work better for highways like 14 and pick up some of the unique characteristics of a stretch like the Nicolet to New Ulm portion of Highway 14 that we'll be working with them and your legislators, too, to try to see them adopt. You know, I mentioned earlier that the focus on the federal tax conformity. So, on LGA, you know, it really fell victim, and other tax priorities, really fell victim to this discussion. You know, the CGMC's goal, as it has been for, unfortunately, a number of years, has been to get back to the LGA high watermark for overall statewide funding of, where we left it in 2002. And we're still not back to that, after the cuts we saw in the early, the first decade of the 2000s. So, we're still $30.5 million short of that 2002 high watermark. But, so, we introduced a bill this year to return it to that level. And also, you know, some tweaks to the formula, just some small updates that we think pick up, you know, some things as the formula ages and would benefit a number of CGMC cities. So, the next slide is, you know, New Ulm-specific, kind of LGA over time. Due to the kind of the reforms and fluctuations in the formula over time, New Ulm has held fairly steady for the past, looking at almost nine years. And the next chart is kind of the different proposals that came forward in 2019. Usually, this chart's a little more interesting, but I think this helps illustrate where the focus was this session. So, you can see, under current law, New Ulm's LGA is 4.31. Under CGMC's proposal, it would have gone up, had they passed that, to 4.44 million. But, the governor, legislature, and the final tax bill that were ultimately vetoed, you know, their focus was strictly on the federal tax conformity. LGA was kind of out of the conversation for them. So, although we pushed for it, we kind of ran into that resistance right away. You know, childcare, you know, I may have mentioned earlier, has been something we've worked on more and more in recent years in response to a lot of our member cities saying, "This is an issue, and it's harming our ability to attract and keep young families in the area." You know, the costs are making it difficult for folks to be able to afford to live in our community or have both parents working. So, CGMC and sister organizations, the Greater Minnesota Partnership, which is kind of our economic-development-focused sister organization, has started to focus on this. And in 2018 advocated for grant funding for childcare facilities and training of additional childcare providers. And the funding for the grant program, for that grant program we advocated for, was contained in the final supplemental budget bill, which was ultimately vetoed by Governor Dayton. But, you know, it's an issue that I think is continuing, a continuing and growing concern for a lot of our communities and will continue to advocate for in different ways. BDPI is the, the longer acronym is, or the longer full version of that is Greater Minnesota Business Development Public Infrastructure Program. You know, it's a program that helps pay the public infrastructure costs of business expansion. It's a grant program that cities apply for through DED, Economic Development Department. And, you know, because the bonding bill that was going through the process in 2016 ultimately didn't pass at the state legislature, this program was basically tapped out when we came into the 17-18 biennium. So, 2017, they did pass, in that year's bonding bill, an additional 12 million for that program. But, because there was such a backlog of projects and it's such a popular program, it was already half-gone by the time we got to 2018. So, we came in, said, you know, "If you want to keep this program going through, and just in case we don't have a bonding bill through, until the 2020 session," in the usual kind of even-numbered years schedule of doing bonding bills that the legislature has followed historically. We said, we proposed a bill for 20 million additional state bonding dollars for that program. And in the end, I think the House had 3 million in their version of the bonding bill. The senate had eight. So, not quite the level we were hoping for, but, you know, we were able, in the end, to secure an additional $5 million for the program, which is good. Hopefully, it'll keep it, keep it afloat until the next round of bonding. And then, I'll conclude here just with kind of some general comments about where we stand in 2019 and what we're looking ahead for and some upcoming events we have. And one thing we can, maybe the only thing we can be certain of, is that 2019 will be a year of pretty significant change. You know, regardless of who wins, it won't be Governor Dayton, since he's not running again. So, we'll have a new governor. Strong and popular candidates on both sides, DFL and GOP. So, I think it's anyone's, I wouldn't want to make any predictions at this point. Every member of the House is up for reelection, so the majority is in play there. And although the senate is not up for reelection, you know, there are special elections in the senate, or impossible special elections in the senate that could upset that slim, you know, one-seat GOP majority. Lieutenant Governor, now Lieutenant Governor Michelle Fishbach is, after she ascended to that position, is now running for it again with, on Tim Pawlenty's ticket. You know, if, and so there's a special election to replace her. If, you know, Carla Nelson, who is currently a state senator in Rochester, is running for the first district congressional seat. Karen Housley, who is a state senator, currently is running for the US senate. You know, if any of them win, they would, there would be a special election to replace them. You know, it will be a budget year also in 2019. And, you know, the new governor and new possible majorities will have their priorities tested right away with that. And really, because, you know, I talked a lot about the federal tax conformity bill. I don't even know if I mentioned that it fell to the governor's veto pen, but I'm sure you know that. So, there's a lot of changes that still need to be made, that were even the ones that had broad bipartisan agreement that just didn't, because it didn't get over the finish line this year. But, because it didn't pass in all those interactions between the state and federal tax codes, it's hard to predict whether we'll be looking at a budget or surplus when we come into the next year. So, CGMC, you know, what are we doing now, between now and Election Day and ultimately the next session? Well, as, I think as I was leaving the office to come down here today, we were putting a candidate packet in the mail that kind of has broad and issue briefings on all the issues we work on. We send all those to every legislative candidate. Every gubernatorial candidate has one of those. And the purpose of that is just to educate, you know, our, continue to educate legislators and educate future legislative candidates so that they're at least familiar with our issues when they take office and the next session, they can hit the ground running. Our gubernatorial forum, when we do our CGMC summer conference next week, actually, now, in the July 25th through 27th in Mankato, on Thursday and the 26th, we're holding a gubernatorial forum, which is open to our members and open to the public. But, you know, four of the candidates have agreed so far. We're still waiting to hear from former Governor Pawlenty. But, on the DFL side, Aaron Murphy, Tim Walls, and Lori Swanson have all agreed to come. And Jeff Johnson, on the GOP side, have all agreed to participate in the forum. We're going to hold somewhere between 5 and 8. We're still planning these legislative candidate forums with our member cities and legislative races. And, you know, throughout the cycle, continue to monitor candidate statements. You know, often it's, folks, even with the best of intentions, will comment on issues that we care about and that we work on. And they're not always accurate on some of those things. So, sometimes just monitoring those things and continuing to educate candidates and legislators. I think there will be a lot of opportunities next session, too. You know, we're going to continue to push for local government aid increase. Continue to work on this childcare issue. Continue to make water/wastewater a priority. And city streets is an issue that isn't going away. And so far, I think it's fair to say that, you know, we've been, we've been pushing for additional funding for city streets of all sizes, and cities of all sizes. So far, I think because smaller cities don't get a distribution through the constitutional formula, legislators have been, have been receptive to message additional funding for them. Cities over 5,000, they've been a little less sympathetic to, just because they get those municipal street aid distributions through that formula. But, we're going to continue pushing on both. So, I'll end here with some upcoming events. Next week, I mentioned, and Mankato is where our summer conference is this year, but it's being co-hosted by the cities of North Mankato and St. Peter. So, I have some events in each and some tours and informational sessions in each. Our fall conference will be in Alexandria, that's in November 15th and 16th. And then Legislative Action Day, which is some people's favorites, because that's when you get to come down to the Capitol and give legislators a piece of your mind, is planned for January 30th this year. And that's always a fun event. So, my last slide is just a quick thank you. I hope I didn't go too long here, but I appreciate your time. Appreciate you moving me up in the agenda. Since Owatonna doesn't meet till 7, I get to do both tonight. So, I get to jet over there on Highway 14 after this and talk to them. But, if you have any questions, I'm happy to take those, too.
Anybody have any questions?
Very thorough report, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, we'll go on to item two, Consider Resolution Approving the Modification to the Development Program for Development District Number One and Tax Increment Financing Plan for the House Tax Increment Financing District Number H-9, which is State Street Department Project.
Dave Schnobruck, Community Development Director. I'd like to note that state statutes requires a public hearing to take place prior to the adoption of a tax increment district. I'd first like to start with just a little bit of background information. The city council at its June 16, 2017 meeting, approved a resolution expressing its intent to establish and administer a housing TIF district to assist with the renovation of the New Ulm Middle School at 15 North State Street. That project involved the renovation of the building into 55 units of affordable housing. The developer and applicant for the project is the Community Housing Development Corporation. They are a nonprofit developer and owner of 45 properties with more than 3,500 affordable housing units. They're based out of the Twin Cities. The establishment of the TIF district was contingent on this firm receiving housing tax credits for the project. The city council at its December 19, 2017 meeting, received notice that the firm had received housing tax credits from the Minnesota Housing Finance Agency. received housing tax credits from the Minnesota Housing Finance Agency, and as a result, city staff began preparation of the appropriate TIF documents. As I indicated previously, this would be a TIF district that is classified as a housing district. To qualify as a housing district, 40% of the units must be rented to individuals with incomes not greater than 60% of the Brown County median income. TIF revenues would be supplied to the project for a term of 26 years. The applicant has provided financial information, which indicates that the project is not financially feasible without the TIF assistance. Our financial consultant, professional management, or professional financial management, has reviewed that information and concurs with their finding. The total amount of assistance that would be provided would be $573,786. In addition to that, we would pay interest and other appropriate expenses. The proposed district would be paid on a pay-as-you-go basis. What that means is that the city would first receive the property tax revenue and then remit it back to the developer. And that's a format that we have used, you know, with almost all of our tax increment Should note that the amount of assistance to be provided to the developer is limited to the amount of property tax that they pay. So there is no additional cost to the city. The city has previously established housing TIF districts for Skyline Terrace Apartments at 2107 North Highland Avenue, and also for Highland Regency House, which is located at 1520 Sunset Avenue. The Highland Regency TIF district has recently been decertified. In addition, we established a redevelopment TIF district in 2013 for city center apartments. Of the recent apartment projects that have taken place in the New Ulm, the only one that hasn't received TIF assistance is Park Place Apartments on South Broadway. Does the City Council have any questions at this point in time?
No questions for Dave? Thank you. This is a public hearing, anybody else like to be heard? Name and address for the record, please.
Richard Seboth, 12 North State Street. We have the privilege of living across the street from this project. We certainly would like to see a remodeled middle school come to pass, and it's become a somewhat divisive issue in our household. Because if the, the way things were stated by Mr. Schnobruck, we're looking at a one-bedroom apartment bringing in, or being rented out for $357 a month. For those of us with properties surrounding the middle school, it's a little bit scary. I'm sorry that we have got the current problem of looking at a neighborhood on North 16th Street that has significant difficulties because of rents in that area, and I'm concerned for the property owners that surround and are adjacent to the Washington, well, the middle school project. You're in a difficult position. I've sat in a similar position. I think this one needs a lot of consideration because it's a double-edged sword.
Thank you, and I understand the issue of rental units in New Ulm. I understand the need to do something with that school.
Need the name and address, just for our record.
Okay, Carol Ackerson, 800 Center Street, also across from the building. My concern is that I have lived in the house I am in for 50 years. I have been there when there was been schools there, buses, all kinds of things that were certainly interesting and challenging at times. My personal concern at this point is I have a corner lot that has a three-car garage, all of which come out onto Washington Street. I am concerned about a 55-unit apartment with one person or two people, and two people means two cars usually. I am very concerned about where these cars are going to be put. If they are going to be put on the street, that's an interesting challenge. If the city is thinking about using some of the public street on First North or on State Street as designated parking for this building, I don't think I quite understand how the city can take a public street and give its use to a private entity. I think that the intensity of the 55 is extremely troubling because there will be so many people and so many cars, and it's not like it's going to be twice a day as it was when it was a school, it's going to be every day. I'm also concerned that there will be no green space if there are any children involved in that building. There will be no place for them to go, possibly Turner Hall, but that's a ways and it's across a busy street. And I, I understand that whoever is doing this, and I was on the school board when we sold it a couple of times to various people, and it's a challenge, very definitely. It's an old building, it's got asbestos, it's got a lot of things that need to be dealt with. But to put that intense of a group in a place in that small alandum area, needing parking, needing a little green space, needing those kinds of amenities, I think is something that I would very much like you to think about in great detail. Thank you.
Thank you.
Dan Beekner, I live at 721st North. I also live across from this proposed project. While I'm not opposed to the project, I am opposed to any change in the ordinance of the size. It's stated that it should be 45 units, that's our city code. That's what we elect you off, you people, councilors to do, is uphold the rules, the regulations, the codes of the city, not to make sure, not to change the codes so that a corporation can make some money. I'm not opposed to the project, but I'd like it to stay at the 45 unit or 44, whatever it is. It's potentially, 55 units, when I added it up, could be over 200 people placed in that structure. That's not acceptable to me. I don't want my quality of life to change because of so many people in that neighborhood. A normal block does not have that many people. I'd challenge you to tell me what other block would have 200-plus people on it. I don't believe you'd like it across the street from you. Like I said, I'm not opposed to the project, I just don't want to see 55. I don't think you should be changing the codes to allow this corporation just because they can't make money off and follow with the codes, and they didn't do the due diligence when they bought this property and check into the codes.
Sharon Seboth, I'm the divisive half of the people who live at 12 North State. And as much as I would like to see this project go through, I am also concerned about the street parking and green space. So I would like to have you give that the best consideration. And I still don't understand why we can't have part of it be a school when we need a trade school so badly.
John Boder, 120 North Washington, same neighborhood. And I do, I'm not opposed to the project either, but I'm concerned about the parking on the street and especially in regards to emergency vehicles, I'm thinking in the winter, and just how that could be a bottleneck that could really be detrimental to somebody's health. So please do think carefully about where you would put that many cars.
Josh Whitechowsky, 21 North Washington. Just recently moved here in February, decided to buy a house. Love the city of New Ulm, don't want my block to change. Two small children, I had a certain idea of what their quality of life would be like living in North Washington. The idea of a 200-plus occupied building across the street really changes our lifestyle. New Ulm is a pretty safe place, I can't argue that, but with that much added traffic on the street, that's more people we have to watch, more close we have to watch our children. It creates a different environment for us than we expected. Additionally, I have concerns that with the development of this project, so many people living on that block, it becomes the most congested block in New Ulm. I also fear that my property, as well as the surrounding properties, will suffer a devaluation. Being that I just bought the property, that's going to be pretty hard to swallow. So I'd like you to consider that as well. Thank you.
I'm Josh Delia, I live on 19 North Franklin, about a block away. We also have some similar concerns with, we have one two-year-old, we're having twins here within a week. We came to town, we came for kind of the quiet, friendly atmosphere, and it's going to totally flip everything on its head, and we're really concerned about it. Not really, not really a fan when I heard this was happening. I just hope you guys, you know, think long and hard. I know how hard it is to get just a, a variance for a fence. You know, we went through our process for that. I don't really think it's, it's right that we change everything around, you know, if they didn't realize that they weren't going to turn a profit on 44 units, I say that's, that's tough, you know, but really hope you guys consider what it's going to do to everybody down there in that quiet little neighborhood where we live.
Christina Envoldson, 810 Center Street. Like everybody else had said, I too am concerned about the traffic and the parking situation. My daughter's with me tonight, and I had hoped one day that she could bike to school, but with that, much more congestion, traffic, it does pose a, a risk being able to send her by herself. And I guess that'd be something that I would stop, but I agree with what everybody had said before, so concerned about the traffic and the extra people in the neighborhood. Taking it from our city block where there's roughly about 30 people on that block and adding another, what, 100, 150 people squished right there, it's just seems like it's pretty tight and just not quite enough room for everybody to function safely, I guess, in the neighborhood. So that's all I have to say, thank you.
Thank you.
Good afternoon, Audra Shaneman, New Ulm Chamber of Commerce, 118 North Garden Street. Tonight just here to represent the business community and the need for more housing in our community. This is the purpose of a public hearing, is to hear the concerns of progress. And progress means change, progress means that we need to grow, and we do really need housing in our community. So I would encourage the council to weigh all the feedback that you've gotten tonight with the need for more housing. You've all been thoughtful in planning and growing our community, so this is the purpose for tonight, is to let people voice their concerns. But we still have a housing problem in our community, and we have someone who is at the table, who wants to work with us as a community to help solve that. So I know you'll go back and work it out or figure out what we can do, but I'm just here to represent a very large concern of a lack of housing, and the town needs to grow.
Anybody else like to be heard? It's a public hearing, anybody? See it done, I guess. I'll just kind of make a few comments, too. I understand where a lot of the people in the neighborhood and everything are concerned, and I sympathize with them, but on the other hand, as Audra said, and I've served on different committees, and I'm on Economic Development, Chairman of it, and housing is really a huge issue in New Ulm, and we really need housing, and we do need it, for middle-class people with less salaries. I mean, there's people out there that need houses. We have even homeless in the town. And I think it's a good opportunity. I think we're looking at it maybe in the wrong way, like it's going to be a troublesome or a problem for us, for the community. I really don't believe it's going to be. I think once it's done, we're going to find out that it actually is a benefit for the community. And I, I could be wrong, and I'll eat my words, but I think we really do need it.
A comment I want to, excuse me, a comment I want to make is, I did hear several individuals who came up here and spoke about the city following the ordinance, and we'll get that chance when the land density comes up. I'll ask the developer, the request for the 45 or the 55, what that difference is. I don't want to do it now, we're jumping ahead, but this one is just the TIF, this isn't the land density issue. But I will ask that question when it comes up, about two items away. So we'll get our answer.
And we also have the parking. Is this another separate issue coming up yet?
Yeah, we have almost four or five issues with this project, so we could, it was something that was discussed before the meeting, we could take them all at once, if we just want to go boom, 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 but I think we need to probably take them one at a time and dot the i's, cross the t's, and go that route.
Sounds good, Roger?
Yep, I agree.
My, my comments specifically are, have to do with, you know, last few years, everybody, we're all been kind of grumbling about what's going to happen to Target, and Target sits there, and it sits there, and, and two years later, it's still sitting there, and nothing's happened with our Target building, and, well, you know, 10 years ago, here sat this school, and here it sat, and here it sat, wanting, everybody wanting something to happen with this school so that it didn't just get broken windows and people burglarizing it and getting damaged, and now we have an opportunity. We looked and we tried really hard to find something we could do with this large building in our, center of our community. It is right next to law enforcement, it is right next in the center, what we call of, of our town, and we have an opportunity to really develop this into something pretty unique, and as folks have said, develop some workforce housing that we need desperately in our community. Some of our factories can't grow because we can't bring in people to work in the factories because there's no place to live in our community, and we've talked about needing 500 new sleeping units or living environments in our community, and, and this will knock away 50 of them, and some of the other ones will knock away 30. And, and so we're chipping away at that need, but we have, still have a ways to go, even after, if we approve this tonight, this is developed, and I, I'm hearing parking concerns from the, from the group here tonight. That's coming up, and we'll talk about that. Is there any options or, or things that we can help with that particular issue, so, and then the density question? But I, I think that that's a... that that's a, kinda where I'm at, that we need to move forward on this project, so.
Step up to the mic, please. Name and address for the record.
I'm Tom Kaler. I'm the president of the board for the State Street Theater. We're gonna be the closest neighbors to this project. And we've worked a little bit with Heidi and the group here, and we've come up with some ideas on what to do in emergency situations, snow removal situations. We, on our part, are allotted a certain amount of spots. We are willing, if nothing is going on at the theater, to utilize those spots for snow removal and things in emergency situations. But as a whole, working with these people, they've been very, very good with us, and we've got a long way to go with them, too. So I just say, listen to it. Hear them out a little bit. Thank you.
They are here tonight, so they wanna, they wanna talk at all?
Sure they do.
Hi there, Heidi Rathman with Community Housing Development Corporation. We're the eventual owner and the developer of this project. Just to quickly address a few of the comments that have been made, I, I reiterate what someone already said. This is why we have public hearings, and it's great to get the input from the community, because of course, we don't wanna be a bad neighbor. And we wanna be able to work with the neighbors in the area to address their concerns. One of the first things I'll mention is, just to correct the, the actual rent, we have a rent chart, and it does get a little bit confusing, just because it's kinda dictated by the IRS. But the one-bedroom rents range from $495 to $585. So it's quite a bit higher than what the gentleman earlier had spoke to. These are people in all the size units, making approximately $30,000 to $42,000 a year. So that just kinda gives a idea of what, what those jobs are in the community and who will be living there. The other thing I just wanna mention is the amount of green space, and definitely it's a challenge. I mean, there's limited green space on site. There's a parking lot that, of course, is very precious to, to us to make sure that people are parking on-site. But there, as part of our proposal, on the backside, there's the buried kinda boiler room that is about six feet tall and kind of a taupe color. We're proposing that that be demolished, and that's making way for a pretty decent-sized green space for the kids. The other thing, and it's kind of related to the density, is that it's a huge, huge building. And so what we've been able to do is, of course, we are certainly asking for this density bonus, but the other thing that this large building allows us to do is have some great amenities inside the building that you won't see in any other multifamily building, just because of the nature of an existing building. We've tried to maximize the use. And so we have some really cool things that are planned with regards to a small library and a kitchenette community space and a workout room. We have the little gym, if you guys are familiar with the building, that's proposed as kind of a, it's a gym space. And so potentially, the kids can go in there, especially in the colder months or the other 10 months out of the year, and be able to bounce some balls in there. And so I think the combination of what we're proposing in that back parking lot with the outdoor green space and then the amenities inside the building, it's really, hopefully, not gonna be as impactful to the neighborhood with, with the number of people that are living on that block. The other thing I just wanted to mention is that there was some comments about, you know, us not doing the appropriate due diligence on the front end to realize that we actually need 55 units. And I think it's fair to say, given the number of for-profit developers that looked at it over the years, if this was a project where it was likely to create a, a large windfall of a profit, a for-profit probably would have been able to take it over earlier. And so what this density bonus is really, where we settled on the 55 units, was trying to balance that common space in the building and having those amenities along with the huge need. One of the first comments that I think we would have heard from Minnesota Housing, had we proposed 40 or 45 units with a huge amount of common space, is there's such a huge need based on the market study that we submitted with the application, why aren't you putting more units in? So I definitely am sensitive to that issue, that, you know, the 55 units is, is definitely a density bonus, yet I think we backed down from maximizing all the space by offering some really nice amenities and balancing that with just the general need in the community. Are there any other questions specifically for me?
And your current plan is still to start deconstruction in November, if everything, everything goes through?
Correct, yep. And I don't know if this is an appropriate time to also talk about the dedicated on-street. I don't know how we're organizing that, but I will just mention we're very-
We're kinda all over the place.
Yeah. We're very flexible with where those stalls are. That was kind of a recommendation that came to us, rather than going through a variance. And so we've looked at trying to disperse those dedicated stalls to make it as least impactful as possible. But, you know, there's things that we can do on the management end to, to reduce that impact by maybe having those nine stalls be the very last that we assign when people move in. Perhaps they're the visitor spaces, so the people living, or the people parking there are more likely to stay for an hour or two or three versus overnight. And so we're, you know, open to hear any of those kinds of recommendations.
Thank you.
I've got a question for you, Heidi.
Yep.
In regards to, you know, it's gonna be coming up here for, further on the agenda here, whether, you know, it should be at 45 units or 55 units. Did the numbers not work at 45 units for your organization?
Yeah. Well, what happens in a situation like that is, we end up either with dead space in the building, where we just have to close it off, or we, and so what I was getting at with trying to balance the market need and what the market study said versus providing an ample amount of community space within the building, that's where we settled. I think we probably could've easily gone closer to 68 or 70 units. And so this kinda felt like the, the happy medium to be able to achieve all those things that Minnesota Housing would kind of be expecting for a building of this size.
What's the typical green-sized space on some of your other projects, you know, of this size? Is there something to compare it? Would this, would this project have similar-sized green space to other projects that you've done?
Definitely. I mean, we, we have green space around the building typically, and then we set aside some, some opportunity for the playground or whatever it might be. What I will say about this in terms of the internal space, it has far more internal community spaces than what we would put in, say, a new construction building.
Thank you. Hello, Elizabeth Flannery. I'm president of Community Housing Development Corporation. I just wanted to tag on to what Heidi said about the, your question, the 55 units versus 45. First of all, CHDC, we're not a profit-motivated business, we're a nonprofit. Our mission is to provide affordable housing. This project is unique. We have other historic preservations, and we've done a lot of renovation products. But the goal here with the budget is not, there's no profit in this building, and Heidi addressed that, or a for-profit would be doing this building, because they're very, it's gonna be beautiful, and the unit layouts are unique, it's gonna be a really nice place to live. But we're just trying to break even on the bottom line. The operating expenses are, are more than a typical new construction wood, wood frame building. The mechanical systems are different. So what we're, we're trying to do, and we did a market study, and we had an in-depth analysis and underwriting by Wells Fargo, who are, is our equity investor, and to determine what kind of made the bottom line work. So there's not a profit coming out of this, it's just paying our operating expenses overall and being able to maintain the rent levels that are affordable to the intended community here. So I just wanted to make that point, too, that this is not a profit-motivated project.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Could I ask one thing? Just, we have been bouncing around here. The tax credits have been approved for the project. Is that locked into 55 units? Can you go back, dropping it down to 46? Is that even an option? Or would you have to reapply?
Yeah. So, I mean, so the answer to that is that we, we would essentially go through a rescore process. So we, this project was awarded credits, kind of the last one that got over the bubble this past year. And there's all kinds of requirements that say we need a certain percentage of two bedrooms, we need a certain percentage of three bedrooms, and we, and so it would, so it's not a matter of just chopping off 10 units and then going on our way. Our equity, tax credit equity would be adjusted to, adjust to 45 units. But it really affects kind of the overall scoring, and that's what we don't-
So is it kind of a package deal? It, right now, the way things are set up, it has to be 55. If the 55 are not approved, are you kinda back at square one?
Yeah, we get rescored, and because we were the lowest-scoring project that received credits, it's likely in future rounds, we would have to-
Now you said that there was a percentage you had to meet, one bedroom, two bedroom, three bedroom. Let's say you did a, you added three more three bedrooms, okay? It only, but it took it, took it down four units, 'cause we're gonna offer three more, changing our density and whatnot. Would that back everything up?
Yes, yes, definitely. Yep.
Anybody else have any more questions?
I guess I kinda struggle with the fact that, you know, the application was submitted for 55 units, but, you know, a little more homework with the size of the square foot that we're gonna be discussing later, you know, to change it from 45 to 55, and kinda struggling on a little bit with that, you know. I know we need the housing and things of that nature, and I don't wanna delay a project either, but, you know, it's kind of a catch-22, you know. Got this far, and now all of a sudden, we're being asked to change and change, you know, 'cause now we got the parking, we've got the housing units, et cetera.
Yeah. And I think from the get-go, you know, we went into Minnesota Housing and all of our funding applications with the idea that we would be submitting something to maximize the space, not necessarily maximizing the profits. And I had gone through and looked at some of the prior proposals, and they were in the 52 to 58 range. And so our architects weren't that far off on trying to find that balance between common space. So just from a, a operating perspective, which is, which is the largest challenge on a huge building, old building like this, to be able to have it closer to 55 units helps with just keeping the general operations going of the building. So the, the general total unit amount is not something we changed along the way. That's been kind of what we proposed, you know, a year ago, when we were considering taking site control of the building.
I agree with you. I was involved in that a year ago when this all started. Dan was also, and it has always been in that 55 range from-
15 and 57 at one point, I think.
It's always been there, so it's nothing new. It's not that it was at 45 and was changed, but it's always been there. Go ahead, Dan.
Can I still speak?
Yes. Public hearing will let you down.
My name is Dan Rom. I live at 1014 Upper Walthai in New Ulm. I am EDA Commissioner and the Chairman of the Housing Needs Initiative Task Force. I just wanted to add one quick comment relating to the housing study that the EDA commissioned last year. And in that report, it indicated with tax credit-type affordable housing, the city of New Ulm is at an extreme deficit at this time. What happens with these projects normally is that they'll run an economic life, and then they'll eventually convert to market-rate housing. And that's a trend we've seen in New Ulm over recent years. So at this time, we've got 20 units of rent-credit affordable housing in the city of New Ulm. Our, our own housing study last year indicated that a size, a town of the size of New Ulm should have a minimum of 100 units. So the 55 units versus 45 units, I think from a perspective of looking at what we need to do to try to bridge that gap that we currently find ourselves in, I think, I, I think we should give greater consideration for the 55. And I think that's what Heidi was relating to, when they were looking at their, you know, in-depth market study, too, is that there is a great need for this range of type of housing within the city of New Ulm. So, and I would reiterate that from the moment they approached us about this project, it's always been in the 50-plus units. It's, it's not varied. And, and we also have other rental units within the city of New Ulm at this time that have this sort of density considerations. So we're not breaking any new ground in terms of precedent that I'm familiar with when it comes to multifamily housing. There are at least a couple other projects within the city of New Ulm that would be at this level of density. So that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else like to be heard?
Mr. Chair, I think we've had some very good discussion. Hopefully, we've been able to lessen at least some folks' apprehension tonight on this project. So I'm gonna go ahead and offer a motion to acknowledge that the public hearing was held and declare that it be closed.
Second.
We got a motion and a second closing public hearing. Any more discussion? Seeing none? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Foes, no? Motion carries.
I'm gonna move to the second half and offer a resolution, waive the reading, approving the modifications for the development program in the Development District One and the TIF Plan for Housing Tax Increment Financing District Number H9.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Offer resolution, waive the reading. Any more discussion? Seeing none? Finance Director, please call a roll.
Counselor Fisher?
Yes.
Counselor Mack?
Yes.
Counselor Schultz?
Yes.
Counselor Christian?
Yes.
President Schmitz?
Yes, motion carries. We'll go on to item number 3A. Consider motion approving issuance of temporary on-sale intoxicating liquor license for the New Ulm Chamber of Commerce. And that's for October 6th and October 13th, 2018.
I'll offer the motion approving.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any more discussion? And that's for October 1st. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Foes, no? Motion carries. Item 4A, number one, receive notice that the Planning Commission has determined that the modified development program, Development District Number One, and Tax Increment Financing Plan for District H9 are consistent with the City General Development Plans.
I will add that the Planning Commission met June 28th, 2018, unanimously approved a resolution finding that the program and the plan were consistent with the city's general development plans.
Any more discussion?
I'll move it.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Any more discussion? Seeing none? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Foes, no? Motion carries. Item 4A, number two, consider motion approving the application of New Ulm School Limited Partnership requesting a variance to reduce the land density requirement for the housing project on the property zone R3 at 15 North State Street.
Anybody have anything?
So we've already heard information on this. Is there more that we need, Rogers? On your end, or?
No, I think it's been discussed.
Again, I'm gonna comment, we bounced back and forth from some of the public input we had about, not against the project, but giving a variance for the land density. Or is the biggest issue to the neighborhood, the parking? That we should not take city streets and issue it specifically for these units? Is that the biggest issue?
I hear a lot of head nodding. That's, that's coming up yet, so.
That's the next item.
I mean, they're, they're together, you know, approving this. If you do that, okay, now you're at the parking, you just committed yourself. I mean, on the record, I gladly go along with this somehow. I myself, I, I'm not that partial to just giving up two city streets for private parking. I mean, that's my feeling on it. I'm for the project. If we do the land density, I understand that. But how can we, I mean, maybe the Community Development Director will answer. How can, can we backtrack here and just give the variance for parking? Or not? I mean, where they don't need the spaces, where we're not giving up the city street. Is that a different option? I don't know, any other councils get any other comment? I just, okay, go ahead, Dave.
Well, Dave Shonberg, Community Development Director. I guess that's a council's prerogative. You know, what takes place within the city right-of-way is, is the city council's decision. And you have previously allowed the use of, you know, parking spaces within the public right-of-way for a private property owner. Matter of fact, you have an item on tonight's agenda.
One on the agenda.
So the reason is different, but the effect is the same. So what you're doing is you're saying that property owner gets to use the space in front of their house for parking purposes, and nobody else- of their house for parking purposes, and nobody else can use it.
We've had that before.
Yeah.
And I understand that. I remember issuing or sitting and listening and the city granting that permission, but in this one, it's actually almost two city blocks. We're giving up the north side. Again, not against the project, but to me, it sounds like the neighborhood doesn't want us to give up the parking where now it becomes a snowplow issue. They can be there how many hours? Does our twenty-four hour effect go into effect when these are designated spots? Can they park there three days? We can't ticket or do anything?
Okay. Let's clarify that if we're talking about parking, that the on-street parking, that there are nine spaces that would be devoted to the project. There are a total of twenty-three spaces on those two streets. So there are still fourteen spaces that are available to the public.
And Dave, can you correct me if I'm wrong, but the, the matter that's, we're, the council is considering now is only connected to parking because if you have a certain number of dwelling units, you're supposed to have a certain amount of parking.
Right.
They could adopt this and the parking is still a totally separate issue.
Correct. So, so the item that you have has to do with land density.
Mm-hmm.
I challenge that twenty-three number. There's eleven spots on First North. I lived there, I counted them out. There's not fourteen spots or twelve spots on Washington Street. You change the parking from parallel parking to angle parking, actually adding a couple of spots, but when you go and look, count the parking spots, there are only eleven on First North, and I don't know how many you're going to count. There's not twelve on Washington Street. So if you give them these city streets, are you going to charge them for maintenance? Are you going to make them remove the snow and send them a bill? What happens during the, what happens during the twenty-four hour parking? I know, I've been told it isn't patrolled. Is it going to be patrolled? The only time it would be, the only time if somebody's over twenty-four hours that it's enforced is if a neighbor calls in. That's not right. We have parking enforcement. They shouldn't be given city streets. I know that there's some other businesses that have parking on city streets, but those patrons come and go. These people could live there. They could be there all the time, and neighbors shouldn't have to call in on this. My issue is also with the size of the unit. If our city code says forty-four, forty-five, let's stick with that. We don't want to be falling into these traps of corporations or other planning, or other businesses coming and saying, well, they got by with it. They got by with it. Look at the situation it put you in today from allow, past councils allowing expansion of codes and expansion of size. Limit it to the forty-five like the code says. Keep the parking off the street. If you limit to the forty-five, you eliminate the on-street parking because they don't need near as much parking then.
I guess my comment is listen to the developer. It looks like they're probably willing to work with the city on this project, and, I mean, if they would take the street parking and make that their visitor parking, it would probably solve the whole problem because anybody can come and go.
Still granted, is there going to be signage on the street and granted for their designation only?
I guess, Dave, do we, would we sign it? Go ahead.
I'd also argue there's not ample parking there. I live at twenty-one North Washington, which faces the rear of the school, and when there's events going on at the theater, I sometimes compete for my spot now. So adding fifty-five units, you know, if you even had one car per unit, that's fifty-five cars, that parking lot can't handle fifty-five cars, even with the adjacent street parking. There's no way.
Also, that number of cars, I think, was based on one and a half cars per unit, and in most cases, you're going to look at people that show up to these apartments that have two cars per family in general. So I think we're even being shy of how many cars are going to be begging for a place to park.
I've been paying attention to where, during the day, on the weekends, parking and what has been filled up. And Sunday night, I came home, nine o'clock, Washington Street to the north, where there's houses, or would you say the west, was full of cars. Across was an alley parked, or a trailer parked across on the other side of Washington Street. During the day, when I come home from lunch, on State Street, it always seems like there's probably eight to ten cars parked there, or in the morning, when I go to work, there's eight to ten cars parked there. I'm assuming those people are walking across and going to the courthouse to work. There's been play practice going on. They're having a play coming up at the State Street Theater. That parking lot currently, when they have play practice, is almost half full of vehicles. When there's a performance, the streets are full of cars, the parking lot's full, Center Street is full. That's my concern is, yeah, there's a lot of traffic and a lot of parking, and then usually the alley becomes a parking lot because the residents can't find a house, or, sorry, a parking spot close to their house. So I end up going around or, so, yeah, parking, traffic can be congested as it sits right now with the things that are going on right now. So that's what I've noticed living in the neighborhood.
Thank you.
Thank you. Dave?
Regarding parking on First North Street, there will be a curb cut that will provide access to a lot that'll be located on the school property, but that curb cut then allows the fire department to have access to the building, and that allows us to eliminate that area on First North Street, which currently is striped for no parking. So that allows us to increase the number of on-street parking spaces on First North.
Thank you.
And you do have information in our packets from our law enforcement and from our fire department that they're satisfied with the development as written. So we were, we received that information. So just for everybody's knowledge, if there was concern about that particular issue. You know, this is never an easy issue to resolve. No matter what we do, there's going to be, somebody's not going to be happy. Parking is very difficult tonight, but I do hear that, and I know that when I've heard the developers are very willing to work with the neighbors. They want to be good neighbors. They want to make this work. They got to, you know, it's their business to be there. So I don't know if, if we want to resolve that particular parking issue tonight and maybe have a community meeting with the owners and, and city staff to try and figure out what is the best possible solution, or have a couple options there? If that maybe is something that we could table and resolve at a, at a future meeting to figure out what is the best plan? We're not going to have a perfect plan, folks. It's not going to happen, but what we can maybe have the best plan available. So I don't know what people think about that particular issue? Or do we want to try and resolve it tonight?
Well, they think we're going to need to, we don't have to resolve it tonight, but we need to have the parking. We got a requirement to meet the parking. So if they need the parking, we're going to have to come with the parking one way or the other.
We could approve the parking, work the details out later through a committee?
Right.
Okay. Could do that, too?
Mr. Chair, councilors, the parking is certainly the crux. It's either forty-five units and there's enough parking, or fifty-five units and there's, now nowhere close. I think on both issues, the density of parking and the number of units in that building needs to be evaluated further by the council. It was pointed out by one of the other speakers so far, is all you need to do is come out at eleven o'clock any weekday and walk around that building, just on weekdays, to see what the parking's like already. It's a zoo. Everything on State Street, all the way to North First, with the exception, maybe two spots, is full every workday. So what's going to happen when you put fifty-five cars into the mix? I think you need to table for further consideration. Thank you.
Comments?
I guess, I was really excited about this project, and I think it's a good project for the building. Parking obviously is going to be a concern, and I don't know how we alleviate that. Obviously, we can't go back to forty-five units. It's kind of scraps the project. They get to be rescored and, and we're back to square one, and do we want to find ourselves back to square one with that building? If we can come up with a better parking option, has, are there any suggestions now by either the potential owners or what else can be done for parking?
Go ahead, Dan.
I don't claim to be a math whiz, but based on the onsite parking that they propose, and that would include the addition of a new parking lot, I, I figured pencil the density out at like one point three eight instead of the mandatory one point five that they're looking for. So with the parking that would be allotted onsite, we're, we're getting pretty darn close to what would meet current code recommendations for that. So I, I don't think we're too far off. I personally like the suggestion that Heidi had, that maybe the on-street would be allocated for guests. They would be not there all the time, and this could be something that could be monitored. And if it continues to be an issue, then it would have to be addressed down the road. But I also agree that, I think the train's already left the station here. I think we, we need to move forward with this. Then the greater need of the community, I think, needs to be considered in terms of our critical need for housing, especially affordable housing, which we're in very dire need of at this particular time. So I, I just want to reiterate, we're, we're close with what they've already proposed for onsite parking, and, and so I think a compromise or, or something, just a little movement would get us there, and, and maybe the council decides that a variance is a better option. I would be curious to know because CDHC has done a number of these rehab projects. It sounded like with some historic buildings, if it's been their experience where they can work with that sort of a, a parking density, the one point, something less than one point five, and if that over time, because they've got experience with the number of units that they currently own and manage, that if that's workable in a lot of cases? Or is it what some other people have proposed? More often, everyone's got two cars. In my mind, if we're talking more modest income people, that would be residents of this facility, they would be more likely to be a one-car family than a two-car family, but that's just a personal observation. Obviously, there's nothing back that up, so, anyway.
Say, Ben, you have any idea? I know I've heard the number two. How many visitor parking stalls there are, or Heidi?
I think six.
Six? So we're real close to, like you said, Dan, where you could almost.
Is the density, or the parking, the one point five, is that pretty standard from what you're seeing, or is that high, low, or? I'm just curious, just.
Yeah. As an owner of these fifty-five units, we're more than comfortable with what we can park onsite with the existing lot and the new proposed surface lot on the northeast corner. From a market perspective and just from what we have with the thirty-five hundred-plus units in our portfolio, we feel comfortable that that is sufficient. One of the things, I mean, I think there's, I understand the concern about the dedicated on-street. In cases where the surface lots are full, I think people are going to park on the street when the lots are full, and by designating these nine stalls with either a permit process or a check-in with our management company or whatever it might be, it act, in some cases, I think it actually provides more clarity with who's parking there, how long they can park there, and some restrictions on who's parking there. If we don't have those dedicated stalls, I think, you know, anyone's free to park on any street that they want to. So I think there's pros and cons, and I hear what the concern is, but I almost would make the argument that it's better to know who's parking on this, in those stalls on the street, and in cases where we can designate visitor parking, we know that they're going to be there two or three hours a day. What happens in some of our other projects is, you know, a visitor comes in, they have to check in at the front desk, they give the license plate number, they say how long they're going to stay, and so that provides kind of a monitoring process for those stalls. So I get, think there's pros and cons, but you're right, the one point three, whatever density requirement, that's, that's typical in greater Minnesota, but of course, in the metro area, it's point seven five to one. So this is really just to comply with the city code.
Right. So what you're saying is you could be willing to work with the residents around there by, the odds are, and I hope I'm wrong, that they aren't all filled, but if they aren't all filled, you could designate the ones off-street parking before, you know, somebody move out and you still got some vacant stalls, you can fill those and not fill the street ones.
Yep, and, you know, our, our property management companies are used to doing that. Similar things happen with underground parking, when we don't have a one-for-one underground parking scenario for all the units. The priority goes to the underground. The overflow is for the surface lots, or the surface stalls, and so that's issue, those are issues that property management companies are used to working through all the time. And the same would be, the priority would go to the surface lots with the, the last designated as the on-street stalls.
And you have property manager on duty?
I think you need to designate them.
What was that?
I think you need to designate them. It's the only way it really would work because otherwise, anybody can park there and you could have a problem that isn't your problem.
Right. So, yeah, I mean, so during the week, you know, during the daytime hours, we would have staff people onsite. In terms of after-hours, that would be more challenging, but in those cases, we usually have more surface slots, stalls available too on the weekends and evenings.
And Heidi, is there parking that's going to be dedicated for the theater in the rear of the building?
Yep, so.
So is it possible to eliminate some of that to?
Um, well. So we have a lot line split where we only own a portion of the parking currently where the ownership line is drawn. There are opportunities for, you know, discussions with the theater about having parking on the theater side. It ends up to be more challenging actually usually for residents because it gets confusing about when they can park there and, and when they can't. Of course, when there's an event or practices, we want to make sure that those spots are available for the theater. So we did start some of those discussions and then thought that we could address it just on the, the side of the parking that the, is part of the school ownership, but.
Could you maybe touch base? I know we went through on the planning and zoning, at one point, it was discussed to put another parking lot actually in front of the theater at one time, and then that was kind of scratched. I mean, we had previous developer that was looking at putting two parking lots on State Street.
Yep.
You're choosing just to use the north end of the lot.
Yeah, so just given the amount of traffic on Center Street, I think the turn-in into that surface lot on the southeast corner in front of the theater poses some challenges just from backup traffic there. But the other thing that we would, we heard early on and that we would have a problem with is, because that's the front facade of a, of a building that's on the national register, that is something that we wouldn't be able to get National Park Service approval on to put, plop that parking lot right in the front of the building. Now, the one on the northeast corner is, is, sits a little bit lower, and it's viewed more as on the corner of the, of the building, but that one on the southeast corner was something that we were told early on wasn't going to be feasible.
So do you have a project in a similar-sized community like, like this project?
Yep.
Okay. So what was your parking allowance there? Was it the one point five, or what do you have?
Yeah, I mean, I think they, we have projects in Little Falls, Hutchinson, and some other communities throughout greater Minnesota, and I think, you know, for one, those are a little bit different in that they're sometimes built in areas that had more space. It wasn't an ex- It wasn't an existing building. But I think a 1.25 parking percentage is typical in greater Min, and sometimes a 1.5, just a little bit different on an existing building like this where it is, kind of it is what it is. But we see communities range anywhere from .75 to 1.5 such as yours.
1.5 is the highest you've ever seen?
Yeah, I mean, in the last number of years, Elizabeth, you might have more input. I mean, you know, twenty, fifteen, twenty years ago, we did see a 2.0 here and there. But I think as, as the issue of, of, you know, number of cars just per household has changed, that's changed.
Take a look at that as well.
Yeah.
We've been at 1.5 forever. Thank you.
What happens in winter when the snow is mounted up in the parking lot and you move, and you remove more parking spots? Is the snow going to be required to be trucked out? And like I said, when people are parked on the street and there was their designated spots, basically deeming them their property? Or was the city going to send them a bill to remove the snow?
I believe at the last meeting we had, they explained to us that the snow removal would not be a problem, that they would work with their residents to see that the cars are moved and the snow would be removed.
And you heard the theater people.
You're still going to have a mound of snow in the parking lot.
Pardon?
You're still going to have a mound of snow in the parking lot unless you make them truck it out.
Probably going to have to truck it out.
Is that going to be a requirement?
What, what's your plan? They would just keep you up there?
Yeah. We haven't talked about the specifics of trucking it out, but particularly in the metro area where we have, you know, .5 stalls per, per housing unit, we're trucking out snow all the time. And so if we could make that arrangement ahead of time, that's, that's fine if we have a place to put it.
And I heard the comment tonight that State Street's willing to work with you also on it, so...
Yeah, so of, there would be some coordination with the snow removal of the parking lot, just like any other parking lot throughout the city. And so luckily, we have the opportunity of potentially having no cars or a limited amount of cars being parked on the theater side, moving the cars to that area to at least capture some of that overflow while our side gets cleared and then vice versa. So I think that is actually a benefit as well as being able to have that neighbor that has that flexibility because in a lot of cases, we don't have that luxury of being able to park on the adjacent property owner's lot while we have our, our parking lot cleared.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else like to be heard?
Again, I just, I got a comment. I'm for the project or the land density. I just don't want to give up, now it's designated that we gave up half the city, I shouldn't say half the city street, designating parking on the public right of way. How can we make it work without that?
Can we do that, Roger?
Can you do what?
What he said as far as his designation.
Yeah, you can absolutely. The council's got control of the streets. You can designate this for parking in the manner that's requested, absolutely.
We're going to do it probably in the next item.
Well, here's a thought. What if we would take a two-year triad and just put it to your temporary and then we can reevaluate it once the project's up and going and see all two years of it go? And come back with suggestions.
I don't think that's going to work. I think if we, if we're going to go forward, we need to go forward with it. It's not that we can't talk about it, but I don't think we'd want to go back and change it and I don't know how we'd go do it anyway. The only thing we could do is come and ask me to change our ordinance.
Mr. President, if, if the council agrees to do this, again, we will need a written agreement, some type of license. It would cover a lot of those details. May or may not bring in the State Street Theater people to the extent they'd be willing to give a commitment on any form of assisting with this. But, you know, that, that's something where the, if somehow there were violations, I think the council's always got the right to pull the street parking if the owners weren't complying with what they were supposed to be doing. But I'm sure they're looking for a commitment that as long as they keep their part of it, that they would be have the parking that they require, so...
The other option would be is allowing them to have the 1.3 by whatever density, parking density rather than assigning those street parks.
Again, I agree with Councilor Fisher. I would rather change that, leave that public right of way alone. And I don't know, Roger, if this has to go back to the Planning Commission or the city can do this this evening. I mean, we're going by the recommendation from our Planning Commission.
Dave, I think I defer to Mr. Snowbrick on that. It's getting into his bailiwick.
If you want to, right, at the present time, city code says 1.5 stalls per unit. If you want to lower that, that requires a variance. I don't see how we can get around that requirement to go through that process.
That was my question.
Would that be included in the, I mean, could we do that on the next item variance that they...
Excuse me, Dave, the request is for a variance, but you're saying they would have to file for a new variance request?
Yeah, this would be a new variance request because the other requests addressed separate issues.
And that process would take about another month?
Not necessarily. You know, we've got an extra week to work with before the next council meeting. It's possible we could hold a special meeting. Or otherwise, then, yeah, we go into August.
Carol Ackerson, again, just one thing I would like you to consider is that on State Street, there is the Lindt House, which very oftentimes has events that involve a number of people. And obviously, they don't park much on Center Street. And there are also two churches in the area that would be affected by these cars.
Thank you. I guess I'd lean toward changing their...
Just from what I heard tonight, I could live with that.
Bring it back to planning and zoning?
Mm-hmm.
And do a variance to...
And a variance.
Table it tonight?
Would they still go with the angle parking then? They still would develop that area for angle parking?
It's already...
Is it already angle parking?
The only change would be they're going to add a driveway and we can stripe some more angle parking when the, when the fire department has access.
I don't think there'd be a need to change any of the parking, leave it as is and just change their density.
So we probably need a motion to that effect, I would assume.
Well, we would, yeah, we would...
Yeah, working on the land density, that'll be the next issue.
Yeah, that's true.
The variance on the parking.
Yeah.
So I'll make a motion to approve the application for New Home School Limited Partnership requesting the variance to reduce the land density requirement for the housing project on property zoned R3, multiple-family residential district at 15 North State Street.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any more discussion?
I'm just seconding it because we have done it in the past for Highland Regency was our last latest project that we did that. I served on the planning and zoning when we did that and we haven't had any issues and...
Any more discussion? See you none? All in favor, say aye.
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 Pause, no, motion carries. Item number four, A, number three, consider motion approving the application from New Home School Limited Partnership requesting a variance to permit construction of a parking lot 27 feet, five inches into a 30-foot yard setback on the property zoned R3 at 15 North State Street. Now we're back at the parking. So I guess if we want to make the change here, it'd be the time to go for it.
Roger, how would you like me to word this?
Well, this was, this is different again. This is having to do with the off-street parking. I think the Planning Commission considered, yeah, so this...
This has to do with onsite parking.
Off-street.
Off-street parking. Okay, so it's a, it's a parking lot that's in the, the northwest corner of the property?
East.
Yeah, northeast corner, excuse me. And so our city code requires a 30-foot setback. And so in order to maximize the amount of parking that takes place onsite, they're proposing to increase the parking area to within two and a half feet of the property line. Now, I might note that the sidewalk is further back from the property line. So there'll be still a decent green space between the parking area and the sidewalk.
So actually, Dave, 6B will be the one that will do this.
Right, I just...
Got it. Just looking now. Got it.
I'm ahead of myself.
So I'm going to offer a motion to approve this application.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any more discussion? See you none? All in favor, say aye.
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 Pause, no, motion carries. Item 4B.
Mr. Chair, Matt just suggested maybe you want to jump ahead to 6B and clean all this up.
So we get it all done so we don't get confused? All right. We'll go to 6B. Consider request from Dan Bechner and the area residents to change the previous authorized allowing the Community Housing Development Corporation to utilize a portion of the on-street parking area on North Washington Street and First North Street that designated residential parking for State Street Apartments, 15 North State Street.
Now, here comes the question. Here I'm going to ask, how would you like that word to the brochure?
Well, I think if you were to move to table it, and if we then, if staff would move forward to work with the developers to ask for the variance on the density issue for the parking, this request might be pulled if, if this type of permit is not going to be needed because they don't have to comply with the designated parking clause. So I think if you just moved to table it for now, it would...
Motion to table this request and then, do you want it in there also have the CHDC resubmit for a variance with the required 1.5 parking? So we officially vote on it, have them resubmit for a lesser amount of parking?
I think you could certainly do that. You could include that in there, yeah.
Okay, that's my motion. Table this issue and then have the CHDC re, come back in for a variance request involving our 1.5 that we do have to have for a dwelling unit? And then bring it back to council.
Second.
We got a motion and a second. Any more discussion?
Can we ask, would it be comfortable to ask for a couple examples and communities of maybe similar size to look at what other communities are allowing for parking? I don't think that's out of line, just to have something to compare it to? You know, if we're, if we're high or if we're low, I don't know.
Well, I just, as I understand it, the, the intention here would be to be looking to grant a variance for this development? I don't know that, unless you were actually looking at changing the requirement for all developers. I don't think that's the plan.
Okay.
It would be just whether or not it could be for this project.
It's a variance from that 1.5.
Okay.
Yeah.
So this would eliminate all required parking?
Yeah.
On, on the street. First North, yeah.
And Washington.
And Washington. Does that help folks? Some? Let's see, some had nodding, some kind of going, uh. Think about it, some.
Any more discussion? See you none? All in favor, say aye.
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 Oh, no, motion carries. Now, let's see.
All right, now we're bad.
Here we go. How about 4B? From the Safety Commission, recommended establishment of permit parking on the east side of Payne Street, Payne Street at Second to Third South Street. You have it in front of you. It's right down across from the school. We got homeowners that can't park in front of their property during school hours, so. And we've had this in the past, so I think there's even some signs, maybe stout, go down in the...
Yes, Mr. President, I believe farther to the south, there's at least one block that still has the permit parking signage. It is rather chronic. It's right across from the, I don't even know what it's called anymore, the elementary school.
I guess I don't see any problems with it, so...
I don't have a problem. I'll offer them resolution with the reading.
Second.
We got a motion and a second off resolution waived reading. Any more discussion?
Didn't we have in the past a requirement that, once the kids are not in that school, that that get pulled? I thought I remember that in some of the past ones.
You mean, when school is not in session?
No, once the kids have graduated or not attending that school anymore. Can't be there forever.
Oh, this is for the residents across...
Oh, for the, oh, I was thinking it was for the, never mind.
Do you remember, Dave, of similar situations with school out in session where...
Or just the resident?
Just the resident.
I don't think we've ever connected the two. Yeah, I don't, I don't believe so either. I think it just gets too confusing to have it sometime, not have it.
That answers it.
Got to be able to park in front of your home.
Do we have a resolution?
Yep.
Yep.
And a second.
First and a second, yeah.
All right. Any more discussion? Finance Secretary, please call a roll.
Councilor Fisher?
Yes.
Councilor Mack?
Yes.
Councilor Schultz?
Yes.
Councilor Christian?
Yes.
President Schmitz?
Yes, motion carries. Item 6A. Consider, here we go, okay, consider resolution approving the conditions and application from Beth and Jason Beyer requesting a conditional use permit to place a special purpose fence on the property located at 511 Summit Avenue. And we asked them to put this back on the agenda, I guess, so we needed some more information, so...
We asked our, we didn't have our building inspector.
Right.
We wanted to get his overall input on this particular situation before we made a vote on this. Councilor Schmitz, councilors, questions do you have or what?
Well, I guess what was brought up last time is, to our knowledge or to what we are told is there was a misunderstanding or step up of some type when the permit was issued to these people. And I guess we just want to know really what happened so we can go on with life, put it that way.
Okay. The information I've received is they came in for the permit application in the morning. Our permit tech looked at it, thought it looked okay, told them that if somebody asked to come out and take a look at it yet, to make, to approve the permit. I came back in later in the afternoon, got the information, went back out. And after looking at what was out there, discovered that we had, our six-foot fence was in the front yard setback, in that 30-foot setback. And then advised that we needed to take a look at what, what the process would be and what, how we could work about this. They asked if they could continue with the fence going back towards the house, which they can at that point. And that's, that's how it all came about. So they came in for the permit. They had found the lot lines. They were told that probably it looks okay, looks good, but was missed on the, on that front yard setback because of, my thought is that house is setback 70 or 80 feet instead of that 30-foot setback all the time that we're usually deal with. And there, it comes to the edge of the house, you have to go four feet in front of that. This one is setback that much farther. It's a little deceptive on, when you look at the drawing and, and how it was set up.
Other than not being put up according to what our code says, there's no problem with it, right?
Correct. It all, it's the 21, actually, it's 21 feet of the fence is non-code compliant. It's six feet instead of four feet. They are, they are nine feet off the, the property line to begin with.
And comment I have to make, this is, it's a rare one. I think, is it the first one to the building official that... I think, is it the first one to the building official that we've actually done conditional use on? The other ones, I don't think we had it conditional use, did we, for height restrictions?
Yes.
We did?
There's two of them.
There is two, okay.
Two in the past, past couple of years that have come in for a condition use for the heights in the front yard.
No, I meant as specific as this, where it goes away if this property owner leaves, it goes away.
No, there are no conditions on those other ones, correct. This one, if property changes hands or whatever, that goes back to that four footer, it gets removed, right? The other two do not have those conditions on.
And why would we, why would we want to enforce that? I mean, why, what was the purpose of putting that condition on there?
I guess, I don't know myself, but from what we understand the last time is that for the purpose that the fence was possibly put up, if property changes hands, it probably doesn't need to be, and they're willing to change it.
Normally, a variance goes with the lifetime of the property. A conditional use, the city does have some control. We'll give you five years to fix it. We'll give you a year, or when you change residency. Yeah, my comment, I'm still on the, tossing on the fence with it. I've had a few phone calls on it. Some of them were because I was the prior building official, being familiar with it. One of the residents, you know, said it was acceptable to him, but he wanted to avoid all of a sudden all these nice six-foot fences in everybody's front yard. Yes, this one's unique. House is seventy feet back. Little deceiving with the thirty-foot setback what our normal fence ordinance calls for.
Dave, you had a...
No, I was just going to comment that when the fence ordinance was originally adopted by the city, rather than going through the variance route for anyone who wanted to exceed the requirements, we decided to do it by conditional use permit. And so, that's why you're considering a conditional use permit request. And Dave is correct in that with a variance that's permanent and runs with the property, whereas with a conditional use permit, it's conditional. So, you can establish conditions to the approval of a request.
And I'd agree with Dave, but you do need to establish those conditions, otherwise it is permanent.
Right.
And this is a fairly unique situation as far as why they requested this, and that's why I think those conditions were recommended.
Anybody else have any questions, Robert? I guess I personally don't see any problem with it, and since it is a conditional use, I, that's our discretion as city council, we can grant them, so I guess I would support it.
I support it also, and I've went out there and looked at it, and I've received several calls. It's in my ward, and it blends in with, I just want to say, the, all the trees and the landscape, I should say, and I don't really see any issue with it. And we've got conditions that if they sell the property, you know, it resorts back and be removed, or that the next owner could cut two feet off of it and go back thirty feet and comply.
My only concern is I just don't want to see our city start having six-foot fences all over and we're nothing but a bunch of boxes. How does that make our city look? And that's such a nice area and such a nice street, and to have six-foot fences up, boy.
But that's going to be our decision.
Yeah, I know. And here, this is in front of us.
And it's on the side yard. It's not directly in the front, you know, and if we just go a block around the corner there, you see a lot of side yards with, you know, tall, I mean, on what would be Woodland and Jonathan and Whitney, you know, the side streets.
Well, there's, yeah, there certainly was some errors from what we heard on, on the city side of things, too, that we have to consider with this particular item, so.
You know, that one, I'm going to back up the building officials' office with the errors and whatnot. I mean, the way it was explained to me, that's why I wanted to table the last time, technically, when you come in for a fence permit, the clerk or whatnot is not the permit signer or issuing the permit. I mean, technically, you're supposed to wait until the building official signs that permit. Now, construction can begin. Yes, there's been verbals where the building official tells them to or not. It's one of those, even in the code books, it's actually stated in there, even if a permit is issued and air, the building official still has authority over it to either pull the permit or stop the project. It's one thing that's actually, I believe it's still in effect, covered by state statute.
But as I stated, it's a conditional use permit. Right back to that regardless.
Well, I'm going to offer a resolution, waive the reading, approving with conditions of the applicant of Beth and Jason Barbara requesting a conditional use permit to place a special purpose fence on the property located at five eleven Summit Avenue.
I'll second that.
We have a motion and a second off resolution waived reading. Any more discussion? See none? Finance Director, please call a roll.
Councilor Fisher?
Yes.
Councilor Mack?
Yes.
Councilor Schultz?
Yes.
Councilor Christian?
No.
President Schmitz?
Yes, motion carries. Item seven A. Consider compensation adjustments for the mayor and the city councilors.
I'll take this one a little bit, if you wouldn't mind. I think President and myself was on the council the last time. We took a look at this issue about five years ago. History in New Ulm has been every five, six, seven, eight years, they took, they take, we take a look at the compensation of the city councilors. When we do that, unfortunately, because we haven't kept up with compensation in other cities, we take these large jumps, and the general public, it's obviously not very happy with that, but then that brings us up to speed, or we're kind of where we should be, and then we wait another five, six, seven, eight, nine, ten years, and then we do it again. And I don't think it's good for our city, and I don't think it's good for the public, and it gets people upset. So, I wanted to get it in and just have some discussion about it tonight, to talk about two different things. And one of the things that I know the county board has done, has taken a look at giving themselves basically what the non-union employees get on an annual basis, and that's voted on each year, and it's just done, and it's taken care of. It's a small percentage. They don't do these big jumps every four, five, six, seven years like we have done. I think that's something that we should consider, and I know Nicole's going to kind of explain there's a little, we've got to make sure we do it on right years, if that's something that we would decide. We can't, we did have a discussion about this like five years ago. We can't authorize like a plan tonight that that's how we're going to do it in the future. You have to, my understanding is, vote on it always. It can't, it can't be a future vote that we're always going to do it on an annual percentage rate, but whatever we give our non-union employees, we can't do that. We have to always vote on it on that particular year. So, I'm recommending that we move to that type of system. Again, we'd have to, we can't vote on that policy, if, Roger could maybe correct me if I'm wrong. The other discussion point here is per diems. When our HR person did a study, first January seventeen, did a study of about twenty-five cities, approximately our size, about a third of them had per diems for councilors and mayors that went to meetings that were, some were descriptive and some weren't, some said for any meeting, some said for a half-day meeting, some said for a full-day meeting. And that seems to be becoming the norm for folks that are going, where when we take off from a day's work, take a day's vacation, we go to the League of Minnesota Cities in St. Paul for a training, for a meeting, we go to a conference. Some of us are taking off from our work, or where we could be, for those that are retired, taking off from other things that they could be doing as well, that maybe we want to take a look at a per diem. I know Brian, our city manager, has some, or maybe it was Nicole that put some numbers in here. This appeared to be the maximum number, that if all of us, the five of us councilors plus the mayor, went twelve days at a seventy-five dollar per diem, it'd be fifty-four hundred. I don't think that that's realistic, that there's, all of us would be gone for six full days at a seventy-five dollar rate. But it gives you an idea what that cost would be, that it's not astronomically high anyway. But it did talk about some of the things that some of us might attend in here, the National League of Cities, legislative days, different committee boards, and the mayor who's involved in the Highway fourteen issues and that kind of thing. So, I said I would discuss it, and I would bring it up for you folks to see where there's some thought on this. There you go.
Thank you. I guess at some of the League of City conferences and stuff that I've gone to and talked to council people from other cities, I guess I'm going to ask the city attorney, one of them, and I mean, sometimes you get the wrong answer, but one of them explained to me that there is a process that you can go through that this particular city used, where they did what Les said, they just went every year and gave them the exact amount, and that's not possible.
I don't know if, if that's a home rule charter city, it depends on what their charter says. Ours is very specific. I think you would have to vote on it. You cannot just put a formula into place that's going to result in adjustments taking place in the future. You cannot do that.
Is that a state law or our charter?
That's in our charter, and as far as what one other city might be doing, just because somebody else is doing it, doesn't mean it's legal.
Exactly.
But so, no, I just, I would strongly urge you to not consider that.
But every even year...
It doesn't, no, you could vote on it every month if you wanted to, but it cannot take effect until after a general election.
Oh, okay.
So, that's just on the effective date, but you can do it every meeting if you want.
But if we were going to take a look at that option of always trying to follow whatever we give non-union employees, then we couldn't have our finance director, for example, always make sure that gets put on the agenda in December or November.
Because you're going to, it's going to be on the agenda, the public's going to know about it.
Yes, absolutely.
You're going to have to vote on it.
Yeah.
And then it'll be effective the year after the general election.
So, it'll be every other year?
On the effective date, right.
Right.
Right, yep.
So, if we were to vote on something yet, this month, or tonight, or whenever, we would, it would go into effect not until January of two thousand nineteen.
Correct. And I think you were, you're discussing this now, there's nothing really on the agenda for it, so you can vote on anything.
No, 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 this is discussion.
Exactly, right.
Yeah. Oh, I'm sorry, yeah, I didn't say to me. But I guess I wanted, you know, I, these are never fun issues to talk about, but that's why so many city councils get into trouble, because they wait too long. And then, and then some people finally say, there should, there's got to be a raise, and then the public gets upset because, well, why, why is it going up so much? You know, and...
Can you tell me, Nicole, when the last raise did go into effect? It's been more than five, it's been like, about ten?
January one of thirteen was when the last one went into effect, so.
So, five and a half years ago.
Five and a half, okay. So, that's, that was the first one since I've been on the city council. We only had one.
The last one was, took effect January one of two thousand seven, and before that was January one of ninety-eight.
Okay. Because I went on in two thousand eight.
It was one of the first things I think we did, talked about, so.
Any comments, anybody else?
No, I'm fine with it.
Well, I think that, that it needs to be looked at more often. I mean, waiting five years or eight years is a long time. I'm not quite sure how, it'd be nice if you could set it up every other year, you know, to follow.
And maybe if it was even every year, the, the cost of living wouldn't be so bad. It wouldn't.
But you can't put it into effect every other year.
No, you'd have to still vote on it every other year.
Well, you could vote, every other year, you could vote on going back to the last two years.
You could do that, too. You could vote going back to two.
That would be simpler, right?
Right. Your increases have outpaced the COLA adjustments, the last few.
Say that again?
So, you've gotten more of an adjustment than the employees have gotten.
We haven't gotten an adjustment.
If you went back over time, like if you went back to ninety-seven and took your wage, and then you did apply to all the COLA adjustments, you should only be making six thousand a year, not eight thousand.
Then if you look at the, where the other cities are in our comparison, most of them are averaging in the eight, nine, ten range. So, we're in the higher end of that, but you know, we haven't had the survey now for two year, year and a half, two years.
But I'm just saying, even when you do a thirty percent every six years, you're still outpacing where the employees are getting, you know, it's more than the COLA adjustment has been.
But then, that's, that's salary again, but now you're, again, you're talking stipends that other cities are now adding on top of that, and then some of them are adding medical on top of that.
That's a comment I wanted to make. I was really surprised reading through the two thousand twelve data that was given to city councilors of some of these cities who offer that full health, healthcare coverage.
And that's, that's a twenty thousand, that's a twenty thousand dollar bill, just medical.
Mm-hmm.
Do we want staff to do anything with this? Do we want an updated survey? Do we? I think they need some direction.
I would say do another survey.
An updated survey?
No, we'd have some preliminary numbers for budget.
Right.
Okay.
We still got time before the end of the year if we want to make any changes, so.
Yeah.
And look at everything else, just take a whole package and look at it.
And if we don't do anything, we don't do anything, but at least we've had the discussion. I think that's important, that we don't put it off for five years. I don't think that's the right decision for us as councilors. So, I'll offer a motion that staff update the current compensation salary for the mayor and city councilors.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Any more discussion? See none? On favor, say aye.
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 Pos, no. Motion carries. Item seven B. Consider approving the updated downtown preservation design guidelines for two thousand eighteen.
Before I make a motion on it, it's pretty much on your Request for Action Council form. You know, we did get the grant in seventeen. Thomas Zahn did a lot of updates for us. The building officials, city staff, and the HPC have reviewed it, made a lot of changes, did a lot of tweaking in it, from materials to demolition process to readjusting our districts. I just, motion to approve. I know you all read the sixty-seven page document. You understand it, so I'll just motion to approve.
I'll second it.
We have a motion and a second. Any more discussion?
I did read it, and I was really impressed with this document. There's a lot of good work in here.
Any major changes?
Not really ma...
Because it wasn't a comparison.
Well, in the HPC commission's eyes, giving them a little more leeway, yeah, a major change, like with lighting or signage. To the average person reading it, no. But, you know, to keep it with the historic preservation guidelines and National Park Service, there were some changes made, significant ones.
Yeah, I reviewed it. I was on the HPC commission back in two thousand five, two thousand six, when we first got this done, so it's, it's a lot of detail. That's all I want to say.
Very detailed.
Okay. Any more discussion? See none? On favor, say aye.
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 Pos, no. Motion carries. Number seven C. Consider motion to schedule informational budget work sessions to provide guidance to the initiative for the staff, yeah, upcoming two thousand nineteen budget complications.
I'll move it.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Any more, and that is for August twenty-first, two thousand eighteen, at two-thirty, and that's allowing two hours before the next council meeting, so. We'll have, everybody's going to be at that one, right? Okay. Any more discussion? See none? On favor, say aye.
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 Pos, no. Motion carries. Seven D. Consider receiving and approving the draft preliminary offering statement regarding the two thousand, or two million five hundred and sixty thousand general obligation permanent improvement revolving fund bond series two thousand eighteen A and seven million fifty-five thousand general obligation sales tax revenue bond series two thousand eighteen B.
I'll offer, I'll offer a motion to receive and approve.
Second. We got a motion and a second. Any more discussion? See none? On favor, say aye.
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 Pos, no. Motion carries. Item seven E. Consider motion to set a date for a public hearing on the two thousand eighteen MSAS improvement projects for Tuesday, August seventh, two thousand eighteen, at four-thirty P.M.
I'll offer motion.
Second. We had a motion and a second. Any discussion? Seeing none, on favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Posed no, motion carries. Item 7F, consider motion to set a date for a public hearing on the 2018 Utility Street and Alley Improvements Group One Project for Tuesday, August 7, 2018, at 4:30 PM.
I'll move it.
Second.
We got a motion in a second, any more discussion? Seeing none, on favor say aye.
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 Posed no, motion carries. Item 7G, consider resolution approve the city of New Ulm to act as the fiscal agent for a grant from the New Ulm Area Foundation for a purchase of three tables and vinyl wrap organized by the New Ulm Chamber of Commerce.
I don't know if Chris wants to touch on it. I actually sit with this New Ulm Downtown Action Team, and they, they do a lot of work revitalizing downtown. Uh, I think next on the, the agenda is gonna be, uh, three more tables being placed. What they're looking at doing is doing some wraps on these benches that people are sitting on downtown and giving history of downtown New Ulm on it. I believe Kathleen Backer is still looking at, she's doing the research for us, history of downtown New Ulm. Uh, they're really working well. I mean, several mornings in a row, I see people sitting outside at the bakery having their coffee at 6 o'clock in the morning. I think it's a great idea. Uh, we've acted as the fiscal agent before, which we have to in these type of circumstances. So, I'll offer the resolution, waive the reading, prove the city in Ulm act as the fiscal agent for the grant from the New Ulm Area Foundation for the following programs organized by the New Ulm Chamber of Commerce, and that's the purchase of the three tables and vinyl wraps telling the history of New Ulm. And again, there is no budgetary impact besides, oh, that's the next one, no budgetary impact for us.
Second.
We have a motion, second offer resolution, waive reading. Do we have a second?
Yep.
Okay. Any more discussion? Finance Director, please call a roll.
Councillor Fisher?
Yes.
Councillor Mack?
Yes.
Councillor Schultz?
Yes.
Councillor Christian?
Yes.
President Schmitz?
Yes, motion carries. Item 7H, consider resolution authorizing the removal and relocation of the existing sidewalk benches and installation of three additional tables in the downtown area and vinyl wrapping the tables.
Again, this is the same team that I do go to the Chamber of Commerce meetings, the Downtown Action Team, and what they're looking at doing is just, they did a lot of study with it, taking three more of the benches that are never used, we have not seen them used at all, and just placing them at the locations, Minnesota Street, Gutten Tag House, Antiques Plus, and, uh, by the apartments. And on this one, the only budgetary impact is the Public Works Department does the bolting out of the tables for us, which is very, very minimal, they've done it in the past. So, again, being I sit on that board, I'd like to offer the resolution, waive the reading, allow the tables to be located and anchored in the city public right area on the corner of Minnesota Second North, that's Gutten Tag House, corner of Minnesota First North, Antiques Plus, and the corner of Minnesota Street Apartments, and allow the vinyl wrapping of all the tables downtown and allow four existing benches to be relocated and anchored at the three table locations.
Second.
We got a motion in a second, offer resolution, waive reading, any more discussion? Seeing none. Finance Director, please call a roll.
Councillor Fisher?
Yes.
Councillor Mack?
Yes.
Councillor Schultz?
Yes.
Councillor Christian?
Yes.
President Schmitz?
Yes, motion carries. Item number 7A, 1 and 2, consider motion authorizing the city manager to execute a purchase agreement and all associated documents with, uh, New Ulm Economic Development Corporation for the purchase of Lot 6, Block 3 Airport, Sub, Airport Industrial Park. And item number 2 is authorize the city manager to execute the purchase agreement and all associated documents with DLC for the sale of the Lot 6, Block 3 Airport Industrial Park, so.
Okay.
Chris?
Yes, um, so DLC, as you know, has outgrown its facility at, uh, 1510 South Minnesota Street, and they're looking to expand, uh, at the Airport Industrial Park, Lot 6, Block 3, uh, they're gonna put roughly a 36,000 square foot building, uh, on that lot. And we had had conversations with NUEDC to, um, reach a purchase price of $125,000 for that lot, uh, and then turn around and sell that to DLC for a dollar. Um, but with that, after they establish their tax abatement, uh, for that, they're gonna repay $8,000 per year, um, for that lot. Um, so we can recoup, uh, up to, I think it's 120,000, um, over that 15-year period. Uh, but if they do get the 20-year tax abatement, uh, we're working with the school district to possibly get, um, an extension for the 20 years, we will recoup the entire cost of that property.
And according to our documents, we have 843,000 in our revolving loan fund, so we pulling 125 out of that, correct?
Yes.
And if I can interject, Chris, um, I've been working with all parties concerned on this, and there should be an addendum where I've put together, and I think Lisa Pezzle got this to you today, what we're hoping would be the actual final versions of the purchase agreements. There were a few details to be worked out as far as DLC's due diligence period, um, after speaking with their attorney, we've got that button down to 45 days, they're hoping it can be done sooner than that. Um, there's a few things they need to be checking on yet, and we would close either 15 days after that or on 10 days' notice. Likewise, on our obligation to pay, uh, EDC for the property that is contingent upon DLC signing the purchase agreement and also being prepared to close. They have some contingencies, um, with DLCs. If something would turn up that would make them not want to go through with this, we're not obligated to buy the land. But when they are ready to go, I'm sure EDC will be signing the deed, so we can make this happen, so...
Mr. Dietrich, you've been sitting here for two and a half hours, anything you want to say on this?
Just making sure you guys sign the petition.
Hurry up already, huh? Just wanna make sure... With that, I'm gonna go ahead and offer the motion to authorize city manager or assistant city manager to execute a purchase agreement and all associated documents with NUEDC for the purchase of Lot 6, Block 3 Airport Industrial Park.
Second.
We got a motion in a second, any more discussion? Seeing none, on favor say aye.
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 Posed no, motion carries.
Offer a second motion to authorize city manager or assistant city manager to execute purchase agreement and all associated documents with DLC for the sale of Lot 6, Block 3 Airport Industrial Park.
Second. We got a motion in a second, any more discussion? Seeing none, on favor say aye.
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 Posed no, motion carries. Item 7J, consider resolution declaring a state of emergency due to the conditions resulting from the June and July 2018 flooding. This is just a routine.
I'll offer the resolution, waive the reading.
Second. We got a motion in a second, offer resolution, waive the reading, any more discussion? Seeing none. Finance Director, please call a roll.
Councillor Fisher?
Yes.
Councillor Mack?
Yes.
Councillor Schultz?
Yes.
Councillor Christian?
Yes.
President Schmitz?
Yes, motion carries. Item 7K, consider motion to receive a petition to construct the roadway improvements on the alley in Block 136 North of Santa Street and set a date for public hearing for Tuesday, August 21st, 2018, at 4:30 PM.
I'll move it.
Second. We got a motion in a second, any discussion? Seeing none, on favor say aye.
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 Posed no, motion carries. Item 7L, consider motion approving the final assessment rolls for the 2017 surface reconstruction project and set a date for public hearing for Tuesday, September 4, 2018, at 4:00 PM, 4:30, sorry.
Motion to approve.
Second.
We got a motion in a second, any more discussion? Seeing none, on favor say aye.
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 Posed no, motion carries. Item 7M, consider resolution authorizing city staff to acquire recreational trail and utilize the easements from Prairie Land Development at 1318 to 1330 Birchwood Drive. Dave, got something on that?
Uh, just that city staff, um, over the years has discussed, um, the possibility of acquiring an easement area that would allow us, um, to construct, um, a trail. Um, also, it's a potential utility corridor that would connect the south side of the US Highway 14 underpass with, uh, North Highland Avenue and the bike trail that we have there. And, uh, this particular piece of property is, um, owned by Prairie Land Development. Uh, they have indicated that they would provide easement to us at no cost, and we thought that, um, it's something that, um, we should, uh, complete at this time. Um, once we finish this part of it, um, it will be necessary then to approach the state of Minnesota and to secure authorization from them to then cross their property. Um, city engineer Kaler has indicated that, um, he thought before approaching Mendat that we should have the, this trail segment, um, in place. And so, it will be necessary for the city attorney to prepare an easement agreement, and then we'll secure the necessary signatures.
Hearing that, I'm gonna offer this resolution, waive the reading.
Second. We got a motion in a second, offer resolution, waive the reading, any more discussion? I guess I'd like to thank Prairie Land Development for the easement to be great, so. No more discussion. Finance Director, please call a roll.
Councillor Fisher?
Yes.
Councillor Mack?
Yes.
Councillor Schultz?
Yes.
Councillor Christian?
Yes.
President Schmitz?
Yes, motion carries. Item 7N, consider motion authorizing the New Ulm Battery to fire cannons during the Bavarian Blast, uh, 510K run and walk.
I'll offer the motion to authorize.
Second.
We got a motion in a second authorized, any more discussion? Seeing none, on favor say aye.
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 Motion, uh, opposed, motion carries. And with no more business, I think this is the first time, oh, we gotta go up to an addendum.
We got an addendum.
I was gonna say, I never got to 7E, 7N.
A short addendum. I'll offer a motion to suspend the rules to take on the addendum.
Second. We got a motion in a second to go to addendum, any more discussion? On favor say aye.
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 Gotta get it loaded here, and then I'll be able to see it. And then I'll have it in front of me. There we go, okay. Addendum number 1A, consider motion approving the issuance of a taxi license to Cato Cab.
Chris, go ahead.
Yeah, so the, I've been part of the Transportation Committee that is working with the New Ulm Medical Center, and, uh, we had talked about getting a taxi service now that New Ulm Taxi had closed shop, uh, and so, uh, Monday, uh, we had reached out to Cato Cabs to let them know that we needed some type of taxi service for the community, um, to help with getting people to appointments, um, you know, emergency service after they are discharged to get them back to their residence if they're not able to drive home. Uh, and Cato Cabs, you know, was given that information, uh, on Monday, and Monday afternoon, they were ready to go, um, got the license and, or paid the fee and everything, and so they're before you today to have that service ready and available. Um, you know, the Transportation Committee was thinking, oh, they'll be ready by August, but Cato really grabbed the wool by the horns and, and stepped up.
Will it be ready by August? I'm sorry.
Oh, we thought they would be ready by August, but apparently they were ready to go as soon as the conversation was over and they talked with their owner, so, um, they'll be ready, uh, tomorrow, if you're...
I had a, yeah, I had to come, we have a, probably this poor guy that's been sitting back there for five hours.
Yeah.
It's from Cato Cab, I know. Do you want to say anything about the business, or?
Step up to the mic, give an address.
Although our mics are better.
And you had to pick on one of our longest meetings.
I know.
I guess so, but that's all right. I'm, uh, one of the managers at Cato Cab, and we heard about the opportunity, and basically because we always have our inspections in place on our vehicles, it was no big deal to gather them together and send them off to you, and, you know, we've, we're licensed in Mankato, North Mankato, Spirit Lake, Iowa, Okoboji, Iowa, so, I mean, and we do a lot of medical runs for Ucare, Medica, Blue Ride, so, we have all our ducks in a row all the time.
But you, will you have any taxis actually located in New Ulm?
Um, we can. We're, we are licensed to have four over here, and, you know, and we're only 25 minutes away.
Yeah.
So, but, you know, we keep some down in Okoboji now, so, and if we need, we're licensed for four, I believe, and I was just brought to my attention this morning myself, so, um, I believe it's four we have, but if we need more, we will get more, you know?
We have real, oh...
We have 57 drivers, and I think it's 27 cars now, and so, if we need, well, we are expanding, you know? I've worked for the company since it changed ownership just about four years ago, and we've doubled our car amount since then. And, of course, they're taxi cabs, I'm afraid they have targets on them sometimes.
Uh, I saw this when it came up this afternoon on an addendum, so I did call Cato Cab and talked with Dan, who's...
Yeah, he's our driver manager.
Driver manager, and had a really nice conversation with him, and he said if we approve this tonight, they'll be here tomorrow, um, that they're ready to go up and running. He said, and as soon as the calls and people get used to them being here, that they will have a vehicle here at least during the day as the business builds, um, and he said they'll be making sure that they get, you know, into the newspaper and into the radio and, and in, you know, if, and if you look in all the bars, they'll have signs about taxi there, that they would make sure they work with them and, and get their name out to those as well. And, um, I know one of the largest complaints with the former company was smoking, and you guys got a very strict policy about smoking.
Oh, yeah. We, I mean, well, because we're STS approved, which is Special Transportation Services to the State of Minnesota, we have to have no smoking signs in the car. And they're inspected annually, in fact, they're coming up here in a few weeks, we gotta have the state go through all their cars one more time.
Yeah, so I think people will be glad to, that's a serious complaint we had la, at the last company, but, so we're glad to have you, thank you for coming over here.
Well, thanks for inviting us, basically.
And I'm sure our journal will have that on the front page tomorrow.
It should be a headline, for sure.
I think it's gonna be a great opportunity, maybe we can give them a heads up of our festivals, you know, that they...
Right, well, and...
...about this weekend, you know, I said, bring them over.
You know, like, the BAC Fest, we're always involved with that, shuttling from Mankato to over here, and, you know, so, it's not like we don't come here anyways, you know?
Well, you waited till the last subject just about, so give us a sales pitch, then, though.
I, I don't say, I think they pretty much handled that already.
All right.
Our sales pitch was getting our ducks in a row, the same, you know, the next day.
You did.
Great.
Well, we're welcome to our community, we're glad to have you.
Thanks very much for the invite.
Yeah, sorry you had to wait so long.
That's all right.
You got to know a bit more about our town, right?
Yeah. Have a good night. Thank you.
You better wait for the vote.
I'll offer a motion to approve.
I'll second.
We have a motion in a second, any more discussion? Seeing none, on favor say aye.
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 Posed no, motion carries. Thank you again.
Thank you.
Item number 2.
We're gonna make it by seven.
Consider a motion authorizing the new lease and construction of office and expansion of team room doors in the Civic Center requested by the New Ulm Steel Junior Hockey Team. Mr. Schmitz?
President Schmitz and councillors, Tom Schmitz with the Park and Recreation Department, uh, you have three of the four members of the city's negotiating team in the room with the room with you presently, um, and so I think all three of us can try to help answer any questions you may have, but we've been working with the New Ulms Steel to draft a new lease, they came to us with a, a request, um, to redraft the lease, um, also the possibility of them leaving, um, and so we worked together, we had many meetings, and with team ownership and some without team ownership, and you have, I think, all the information you need here on the action form and the attached, uh, draft lease agreement. Um, there's also two construction projects on this action form, which we've previously talked about, and that is to, uh, have an office expansion, an approximate cost of eight thousand dollars that the team would use, and, um, installation of some doors, we're proposing three doors in between six of the team rooms, one of those systems, one of those doors would benefit the team, total cost of the three doors, uh, to improve versatility in, in the civic center is thirteen thousand one hundred and sixty dollars. So, I'd like to try to answer any questions you may have, along with councillor Fisher and, uh, attorney Hipper, we're, we were part of the negotiating team.
I'd like to thank you for your work and stuff, and I, I think it's a good contract, I, I don't think we wanna lose them, it's a good benefit for the city, and I guess I see no problems with it.
I as well, very pleased, and thanks to councillor Fisher for sitting in on this, um, this committee and getting this contract where it is at today, and, um, I, I know it was contentious there for a while about whether they were gonna stay or go, and I'm glad they're staying, and, and I think the community is, is much, um, better off for them being in our community, and the city benefits by the revenue that we'll bring in, and with that, I'm gonna go ahead and offer the motion to authorize, um, the li, the new lease and construction of office expansion and team room doors in the civic center as requested.
Second.
We got a motion and a second, any more discussion?
I just wanna thank the whole committee that worked on it, really put in a lot of time, and we had a lot of discussion, and, and it was a team effort of getting it done, but it worked well.
Good.[1767.41]